I'd like to call the January 7, 2020 council meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, free, equal, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Right now, I'd like to ask, are there any changes to or additions to tonight's meeting agenda?
Yes, I'd like to add a council conversation to the end.
Okay. Is there anything else? Any big ones changed? Okay, great. We will add that to the end of the agenda. At this time, I would like to call Judge Rosano up to the front to lead the Oath of Office and Minister of the Oath of Office to Councilmembers Dorr, McNeil, and Thompson.
I state your name.
I do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. Norber, that I will support
That I will support.
the Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
and the State of Washington
And the State of Washington.
and ordinances of the City of Bothell
And ordinances of the City of Bothell.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
and impartially
And impartially.
perform the duties
Perform the duties.
of City Councilmember of the City of Bothell
Of City Councilmember of the City of Bothell.
to the best of my
Best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
I'm not going to speak, but you can. Will you do the consent assignment, or do I have to sign? I'll sign. At this time, I would like to call for visitor comment. Each person that -- I have two sign-up sheets tonight, and I will call you to the podium. Each person will have three minutes to speak. The first person I have on the sign-up sheet is Julie Rodwell.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. My name is Julie Rodwell, 9920 Main Street Boulevard Place, Bothell, and I moved here in July. My background is urban planning, economics, and transportation. My baby daughter used to go to daycare in Bothell, but she's now 39, so that was an awful long time ago. And I was very pleased when I came back here to see all the amazing stuff that's going on and all the creative thinking. We at Boulevard Place are very pleased to be neighbors of this Bothell gateway and look forward to collaborating closely with the city and your chosen developer to make it a really great place. I attended the September 10, 2019, City Council meeting, which was when you had a presentation on architectural visioning. And at that meeting, it was mentioned that that visioning was based on discussion at an earlier meeting with seven -- the seven of you councilmembers who were there then, and 12 members of the public that were in the room. So that's an issue I really want to press on. Lot D, Block D, is literally on the doorstep of Boulevard Place. And so we, and many like us, about 12 new apartments and townhouses in central Bothell have opened since the planning was done for this area, since the comp plan was adopted. And we're going to be very significantly affected by what happens. So we want to make sure that we're engaged. After that September 10 meeting, I wrote to the city manager and the council expressing interest on the part of Boulevard Place to get engaged. And I just want to read to you what the minutes from that meeting said. Council consensus was to see more public input for the designs. City Manager Jennifer Phillips stated that plans are being made for public engagement as part of the gateway development process. I guess I expected a flyer in the mail, a survey, or something sort of like what ecology did with us in July. We all got a flyer about the remediation. And we do have a little team, Tom, Linda, and Virginia, and one person who's not here, Bob Baldridge, to work on this issue on behalf of our building and convey information to and fro. But this working with one building is not a substitute, in my mind, for this public engagement with the whole community, especially with so many new residents. So, thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Tom Crowback. Thank you.
I am Tom Crowback, and I'm also over in Boulevard Place, although I've only gotten there in early December, so I don't have much experience, however, I mean, experience in the Boulevard Place. I wanted to share with you a little bit about my background. I've been on, not city councils, but design review boards and homeowners association. I served as president of a homeowners association in Colorado for a while. So I really appreciate, even though my tasks were much smaller than yours, I appreciate the effort that you have to put in to make something like this work. My biggest reason for being here was just to share that a number of years ago, my wife and I moved into Columbia, Maryland. And some of you may know that Columbia, Maryland, and Reston, Virginia, and a few other places in the East Coast were built by the Rouse Company from the ground up. I mean, they bought all of the parcels quietly, and they literally built the city on paper before they pushed the first shovel. And of course, Del Webb, that we're all familiar with, has done similar things, and so have a lot of other builders. My only, quote, "agenda" here is to offer my services in any way I can to provide information or to be a gopher. I'm hoping that we're going to end up working with a fairly large company that has a vision for the city. I love what you've done here so far. That's why I'm here, instead of in Mill Creek. I probably have more I could say, but I think I'm going to cut it off. Thanks.
Thank you. That's the last sign-up sheet I have. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? No? All right, thank you. Sorry. We will now move on to AB number 20001, which is the election of the mayor and the deputy mayor. I will now conduct the election for the mayor to a two-year term, and the nomination procedures are as follows. I will call for nominations. Each member of the city council is permitted to nominate one person, and nominations do not require a second. A nominee who wishes to decline will do so at this time. Once all nominations have been made, I will close the nominations. If there's only one nominee, the election will be conducted by voice vote. If there's more than one nominee, the election will be conducted by written ballot, which you have in front of you. Each written ballot would contain the name of the councilmember who cast it, and I will publicly announce the results of the election by reading each ballot cast into the record. A majority vote is required. So at this time, do we have any nominees? Councilmember Dorr.
It's my pleasure to nominate Councilmember Liam Olson. I've known Councilmember Olson for over 10 years. We served on the Landmark Board together for six. He's had a meteoric rise in Snohomish County. Serves as the co-chair of the Snohomish County Tomorrow, which is the equivalent of Sound Cities Association in King County. Bothell is the third-largest city in Snohomish County, and he is the only councilmember from Snohomish County. I've known him to be unflappable, thoughtful, a good listener, and humble, and I think he would make an amazing mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, and it's my privilege to nominate Tom Agnew for mayor. And I think I would like to speak to the fact that I've heard from many community members who've requested that Tom Agnew be our next mayor. They are very interested in his community work. There's a need for us to connect to many organizations, and when there's Chamber of Commerces and to the business communities, and we need somebody out there that has the time to attend all of those meetings and bring those people into the business of the city so that they know that actively we are concerned about them, that we have people here to help them, and he can do that outreach. And so it's my privilege to nominate Tom Agnew.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations? Councilmember Agnew.
I nominate James McNeil. You know, he's a gentleman that has brought us the park at Bothell, or Wayne Land, or whatever you want to call it. He got involved in the NPRSA, and he got behind that, and we had an election that is going to put them in good stead for the rest of our lives, anyway. So it would be my honor to nominate James.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations for the mayor? All right, with that, we've obviously had more than one, so you have ballots in front of you, so please take your ballot for mayor and...
Laura, can I speak for a second?
Sure. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Laura. So I take serving the community of Bothell very seriously, and I'm humbled by Councilmember Agnew nominating me to be the mayor. Councilmember Agnew is a friend of mine. He served on this council for eight years and served this community very well. And I'm, at this time, going to not take his nomination. I'm going to pass on the nomination. I would be honored to be the mayor, but at this time, I think, opportunity with Councilmember being in his last two years, Councilmember Agnew, I'm going to decline to take the nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Appreciate that. Thank you. So we do still have two nominations, so please use your ballot, and I will collect those, and then we'll read those ballots into the record. Councilmember Dorr has nominated Liam Olson, or voted for Liam Olson, sorry. Councilmember Agnew has voted for Councilmember Agnew. Councilmember Olson has voted for Councilmember Olson. Councilmember McNeil has voted for Councilmember Agnew. Councilmember McAuliffe has voted for Councilmember Agnew. Councilmember Zornz has voted for Councilmember Olson. And Councilmember Thompson has voted for Councilmember Olson. Congratulations, Councilmember Olson. You are now our new mayor. And with that, I'm going to turn over the election for the deputy mayor to you. Got your little sheet here.
Thank you very much, everyone. I'm very honored. I'll work my hardest. I'll serve the community the best I can. It's a great privilege to be able to do this, so thank you very much. Thank you. So I will now conduct the election of the deputy mayor in the same manner as previously stated by the city clerk. The deputy mayor will serve a two-year concurrent term with the mayor. So I'll call for nominations for deputy mayor. If there is only one nomination, we will conduct a voice vote. If there is more than one nomination, we will conduct a vote via written ballot, which is in front of each councilmember. So I'll open the call for nominations. Councilmember Thompson?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Jean Zornz. I have been continually impressed with her dedication to Bothell and the community. She works hard. She actively listens to the community, and she's always gracious. She considers other ideas even when they conflict with her own. It's an honor to serve with you, and I hope that's in the capacity of you being the deputy
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, and I would like to nominate James McNeil. James McNeil serves on many committees and represents us very well. I do serve with him on the Eastside Transportation Partnership, and it's been a privilege to hear him speak about his ideas and the progress he wants to make for this town. I also really believe that James has a talent for bringing people together and listening to everybody and honoring what they have to say. So I would be privileged to put his name up for nomination for deputy mayor.
Thank you. Any other nominations?
Again, I'm honored...
Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you. I'm honored, Councilmember McAuliffe. But I'm going to nominate Councilmember Agnew for the same reasons I stated earlier. He has served this community well, and I feel that Councilmember Agnew, in his last two years, being retired, has the opportunity to serve this community and be in the places we need to be in. I've been recently elected to several regional committees, and I can serve Bothell on those committees, but I would love to have Councilmember Agnew, who served this community so well. So I would love to nominate Councilmember Agnew.
All right. Any more nominations? Last call. All right. City clerk?
So with that, please fill out your ballots, and I will collect those as well. So the ballots for the deputy mayor are Councilmember Agnew voted for Councilmember Agnew. Councilmember Dorr voted for Councilmember Zornz. Councilmember Olson voted for Councilmember Zornz. Councilmember McNeil voted for Councilmember Agnew. Councilmember McAuliffe voted for Councilmember McNeil. Councilmember Thompson voted for Councilmember Zornz. And Councilmember Zornz voted for Councilmember Zornz. So congratulations, Councilmember Zornz. You are our new deputy mayor.
Congratulations, Deputy Mayor Zornz. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you. I'm sitting here shaking like a leaf because each one of you guys are phenomenal. The face -- you are the face of Bothell, and we've come so far. And I'm really excited about the next couple of years. And thinking of what our former mayor said, we're all one vote. We're all in one, you know, we're all one of seven. So I look forward to the next two years and what we do for Bothell. Thank you.
All right. Wow, yeah, I'm still shaking a little bit myself, so I can relate with that. So on to our council committee assignments. So each of us have council committee assignments in front of us for the 2021 assignment, so we'll just move down the list here with our internal committees first. So we have the Capital Facilities Plan Committee. There's three appointments. Meets on an as-needed basis a couple times a year, as I remember. Is there anyone that's desiring this committee? Councilmember Dorr? Councilmember Agnew? One more.
I'd be interested. I see that you served in this capacity.
I did.
If you've got a full plate. So if you're not doing it and there's no one else looking to do it, I would like to be in there.
Deputy mayor? All right, great. So the Economic Development Committee, looks like it's committee of the whole. I'll be the liaison. Human Services Committee. So previously, we had Dorr, McAuliffe, and McNeil with Agnew as alternate. Any interest in staying?
Yes, I am interested in staying. Thank you.
Me as well. We make a great team.
And then one alternate.
I'd be happy to stay on an alternate.
All right. Bringing the band back together. All right, so our Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Agnew?
I'd be interested in staying on that committee.
All right, two more appointments and one more alternate.
I would like to stay on the committee.
Mr. Thompson? Councilmember Thompson?
I would be happy to serve on the committee.
All right. And one alternate.
I'd be happy to serve as an alternate.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, the ministerial boards. Joint City and Fire District Advisory Board.
I'd be happy to stay on that.
I'd like to stay on it as well.
All right. Everyone good with that? All right. And left one board?
I'd be happy to stay on that.
Myself as well. I'd like to stay on that.
On to the Association of Snohomish County Cities and Towns. I was on this before, and if no one else wants this one, I'd be happy to stay on it. All right. I'm registered for the dinner this Thursday, so... So Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee. Same with this one, if I don't get any looks.
Are you -- you're the co-chair this year, or no?
I'm -- we haven't voted on this yet, so... So the Sound Cities Associations. Public Issues.
I'm sorry, Mayor Olson, we need an alternate for the Snow County Tomorrow Steering Committee.
Oh, thank you very much. So SCT alternate. Councilmember Thompson?
I was going to be interested in the Public Issues Committee in this capacity for Sound Cities.
For the alternate. All right, so back up to the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee. We need one alternate.
I would be an alternate.
All right. I'm pretty good at making that one, so...
Good.
All right, the YRAT 8 Forum. Oh, Sound Cities, we were saying, oh, so we were saying Councilmember McNeil was going to stay as the first, and then Councilmember Thompson was going to be the alternate. Is that good?
Councilmember McNeil, you're on the Board of Directors now, too? And so you want to do both?
Yes. But if somebody else wants it? I'd love to be on pick, if you're willing to give it up.
So would you be the alternate, then? All right.
I'd be the alternate.
All right, so now we have the YRAT 8 Forum. One plus an alternate. Councilmember Agnew, you were involved in this one before.
I'd be happy to be the alternate.
All right.
Excuse me, where are we at now?
YRAT 8, the bottom, the second page, I believe. So the YRAT 8, Councilmember Agnew is volunteering for the alternate, but we need someone to attend. It's Mercer Island, meets the third Thursday every month at 3:00 PM.
I have a work conflict. I mean, in the summer, I could be there, but during the, you know, regular school year, I couldn't be there.
Councilmember Agnew, would you be willing to be the appointment?
As long as my wife retires, and she can do the babysitting.
Where is she?
All right, so Councilmember or Deputy Mayor Zornz, I'll put you as the alternate. All right. Mayor's meeting, I'll take those. King County, North End, South Snohomish.
I would, oh, sorry, I'd like to do the 405 just because as a continuation. But I might need an alternate if there's a meeting in the next couple of months.
I'd be happy to be the alternate.
All right, the ELG.
That was the one I was talking about. So you mean 522 now?
Oh, sorry, yeah. 522, next one down. Do you know when those meet?
They meet as needed. I don't think they've had a regular schedule.
All right.
It's generally during the day. It's not in the evening or later afternoon.
Yeah, usually.
It's been like 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock.
I don't mind being the alternate for that, but again, if it meets January, February, middle of March, I can.
All right, well, I will take that one, and then Councilmember Dorr, I'll put you as the alternate. All right, on to Health, Tourism, Arts, Parks, and Recreation. So the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC, one plus an alternate.
I'd like to stay on that.
All right. Excellent.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the alternate?
Councilmember McAuliffe will be the alternate, deputy mayor. NPRSA, the North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area.
I would like to continue on that.
And I would like to be the alternate, or who's the alternate? Oh, Liam, we talked.
I was the alternate, yeah, so...
So I'd like to be the alternate.
Yeah, and I generally attended, so it's a good one to attend, and it's nice and close, right in our backyard. All right, so we do not have the Snohomish, we don't have the Board of Health this cycle.
We, so the Board of Health, that's a little different. That one is a shared appointment with the cities of...
Breyer and Mill Creek.
Breyer and Mill Creek. And Breyer is asking for one of their councilmembers to be the representative for the three cities. So if the city council is okay with that, we will send a letter... send a letter that just states that we're fine with their, their person, and that'll be that, and it'll be for, I believe, a two-year term.
Two years, yeah.
I believe.
I was, I did the two years for Bothell, so.
Yeah. So I can't think of the person's name off the top of my head, and I forgot to bring the paper, but yeah, they did send a letter. Mill Creek did. I think it's in the packet, actually.
I think we got the email.
What's that?
I think we had an email for that also.
Yeah. So if, if the council's okay with that, we will send a letter. I'll have you sign it, Mayor Olson, once we get it put together, and we'll send it off to them, and that'll be the appointment.
All right, everyone fine with that?
Okay, thank you.
All right, the Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee. So staff appoint. So do we need one for this, or?
Well, if, if a council member would like to sit on this board, you're welcome to appoint yourselves. Otherwise, you can continue, you can reappoint Sabrina as a staff member, and she, and she or staff attend the meetings, and then each month, I send out the weekly, the monthly update from the meeting.
Anyone have a desire, or keep it as it is?
Well, Sabrina is very capable at this.
Definitely.
But when my summer schedule happens, there's nothing to stop a council member from joining her and going down there, is there?
You're always welcome.
Okay.
All right, so we'll keep that as is. All right, so Regional Transportation Committees, the East Side Transportation Partnership. So it'd probably be good to keep you on.
And I will continue to.
All right. We can do that. Two alternates. I can be an alternate. Try to cross town for me in the mornings.
I can be an alternate as well.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Seashore Transportation Forum. So this meets the first Friday of the month in Shoreline City Hall. One appointment plus an alternate.
Is this one that we are not voting members for? Or are we, okay, so it's not, we don't have to staff or have someone on that one. We've chosen to, but we don't get a vote.
Correct. So if there's no...
The question would be, should one of us attend to ensure that the stuff that happens on the North 522 stuff, we have opportunity?
Quite often, the conversations at, at ETP and Seashore are very similar. We could monitor the agendas and let council know if there is an appointed representative. Let them know if there is a specific topic for that particular body.
Okay, and, and I'm used to, because I did attend Seashore, the agendas are typically similar from Seashore to ETP. And since I'll be chairing ETP this, this year, I'll see if I can't figure out a way that those agendas, you know, come for, for both, and we can take a look at them early.
Sure, sounds great.
All right, so the UW-Bothell Cascadia College Campus Town Community Advisory Committee.
I'd like to stay on that.
And I'd like to continue as the alternate.
Washdot Executive Advisory Group. One appointment. Meets quarterly.
If Deputy Mayor Dewar no longer wants to be on this, I would love to.
I wouldn't say I don't want to, but I
Or, not Deputy Mayor Dewar. I said that wrong. Councilmember Dewar. My apologies.
Nope, no offense taken. I'm happy to let you take it. And I, I'm happy to be the alternate if we need one. I think I get to go anyway, so.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Thompson on that one. So for the Community Transit Board, one council member. Councilmember McNeil, you were on this before?
Yeah, I attended that last year, and I attended that last year, and I'm okay, I've actually registered to attend it again this year, so I can do it.
All right, we will keep you on there. And then we just have a list for serving on council members discretion.
So Land Conservation Advisory Group is, is no longer meeting. That group is, was closed a year ago. King County Flood Control District, I elected off of that last year, so I'm not serving on that currently. Last year, Regional Law, Safety, and Justice, I was the committee chair. Awesome opportunity to be able to be part of the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice. I, I removed myself from that committee this year. The North Shore Equity Diversity Committee, again, that was a school district that I was meeting with. I elected to take myself off of that committee. However, I'm very involved in the diversity within our community and our school district, ensuring we have equity and inclusion. PSRC Transportation, I think that was the deputy mayor.
Yeah, that's an appointed one, and I didn't renew.
And I would like to do the North Shore School District Equity and Diversity Committee, then?
So on top of that, Mayor, I have the Regional Policy Committee, King County Regional Policy Committee that I'm on. I was just recently elected to. The SCA Board, Sound Cities Association Board, and then I'm also on the executive, PSRC Executive Board, Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board.
Mayor Olson, I've been appointed to the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee as well.
All right, excellent. All right, that looks like you fill that. So Councilmember Agnew, you're on the HART Committee for the remainder of that.
I am.
All right. And I can continue to serve as alternate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that closes our council committee assignments. So then we moved on. So we had an added item for the council conversations.
Yeah, I, I wanted to update council. I met with Sound Transit in relation to our conversation of December 3rd, when they came before us in visitor comments and notified us that if we don't give them an exemption in Canyon Park, we wouldn't be getting BRT service. And so I, I met with them. They conveyed to me that 405 funding is not at risk from the state. And when I asked about other solutions, such as TOD at Canyon Park, they explained that the, the Park and Ride at Canyon Park is owned by Washdot, but run by Community Transit. And so in order to do TOD, it would have to go through the legislature, some sort of funding. I guess in Kingsgate, they have legislative funding to do the study, and that's where that came from. So not an easy fix there. They talked about being six months behind on their scheduling, which I wasn't aware of, and some of their challenges, which include the $100 million that's required for Brickright Yard Road, the inline station that wasn't in, in the original plans. So that's $100 million there that is unbudgeted, and then an additional $10 to $20 million that's unbudgeted for 522, where it meets 405, at the, at the connection, where 522 BRT and 405 will meet in that overpass. The 405 piece is covered by the, the bonding of the tolls. I also learned that the parking, the parking garage that we had been told would be going on Popkinie, that was the plan, is in fact not going to be there. Apparently, two months ago, the school board met and decided that they weren't interested. And I was also told that by a constituent, and it was a little bit embarrassing because I had no idea. And there are obviously ramifications for Bothell. If it's not going to be at Popkinie, where will it be? And how does that impact us? And so I just wanted to figure out if we could find a mechanism, and maybe, I didn't realize that, that at the time, that we had continued 405 and 522 BRT. But we need some sort of mechanism so that council is aware of what's going on, and we don't get surprised like that. Because I, two months ago is a long time, and I think we should have known that Popkinie wasn't going to happen, and been able to have conversations about that. So I just wanted to update everybody so that they know what I know. And that was really it. I don't know if anybody else has comments or has heard anything else in the community, or, or maybe everybody else knew and I didn't. I was the only one who didn't know.
Go ahead, we're conversing, so.
I am, so we're conversing.
Yep, please do.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make you all aware, and I think some of you already know, that one of my goals for this year was to create a youth council. And because I'm working with Jennifer Phillips, our city manager, and Kelly Zoli, our deputy city council member, to bring two youths who would be, youth, young people, who would be voting members as members of the Arts Commission and the Park Board, so that they would have a voice in, in, on those commissions, which I think is really exciting. So it's like an incubator for letting our young people participate in our government process. And I think those two, the Arts Commission and the Park Board, there's two places where they have a very good voice. So that will be coming before us, and I'm just really honored with the work that Kelly Mazzoli has done, and Jennifer Phillips, thank you so much. And one of my goals is, is starting to happen. So thank you. And one other thing I did want to say was, I, I noticed that there was a projected agenda set out, right, this afternoon, and I want to thank you also, Jennifer, for that.
Go for it.
Well, I, it feels like, you know, youth council, we're just talking here, right? Youth council is a great idea, and, and you've been very passionate about it, and I have, you know, a few things that I'm passionate about. And it feels like we, as a council, we have lost our bearings on getting agenda items where we can ta, talk about them fully instead of kind of tippy-toe into, into things that we bring into the city. And so like for youth council, I, I like the piece that you've talked about, where we bring youth in, but I feel like we kind of miss the piece of council talking about, do we want a youth council, and what does that look like? How do we describe it? So I don't know how we, I don't know if it's just my perceptions, or, or if it's, or if it's something that city council needs to be more purposeful in, in how, and we need agenda items set out three months, three months ahead, or three? How do you like doing that? Not my conversation, I know, I'm sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot. But a mechanism that we're all clear on how we get agenda items going, so that we're all on the same page, and we're thinking, and we're digesting it, and, and we can just deal with it a little more directly than indirectly. I feel like it's an idea, that's a good idea, but we've just dealt with it really indirectly, and I would like, as a council, that we deal with it more directly.
Yeah, so I think with our council conversations here, we want to be able to have this open dialogue and kind of gauge the interest we have, but we also have to remember, you know, and keep in mind the machine, and how much, you know, is already dedicated to that. And, you know, if we, as a council, have a passion for an item, you know, what, you know, kind of is getting pushed down, or getting pushed out of our work plan off of that as well. So, I mean, I think this council conversation is the right time and place to figure out where our passions and energy are, so.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the perfect time to have conversations about what are important to all of us as elected officials. What we hear from our community, what's important to our community, and making sure that we work together on behalf of our community. Councilmember McAuliffe, the youth council, awesome idea. There's some things that we need to overcome. There might not be time, but continue to bring those things forward, because those things are important, not only to you, but to the rest of the community. We may not have the time in the city to do those things, but you need to have a voice. We all need to have a voice up here. I think one of the things that, that I would like to talk about is committees that we're on. And how do we find ways to engage with one another, because we can't just talk to each other because of OPMA violations? So how do we, when we serve on these committees, we do these things regionally, and we ensure that Bothell has a voice, how do we bring that back to council when we need to make decisions? As an example, one of the things on PIC is there's decisions that need to be made. So you now being a member of PIC, we'll need to bring things back. Or we need to trust the decisions you're making on PIC are decisions that the body of a council is okay with. So those are, maybe in the upcoming, you know, this year, we talk about how do we foster a better committee reporting process, so that we can make sure that all of us have a voice on the committees, as well as have an open dialogue or discussion on things that matter to us. We're going to be talking about Wayne in 2020. We're going to have a meeting on the 16th. But it's important to understand, that meeting's about just understanding what has already taken place. There's other opportunity for engagement and hearing from the community and engaging with them on what it can become later. But it's making sure that we're working together collaboratively, and making sure that everybody, and I, I want to, I want to say this loud and proud right now, because I think this is my moment to say it, but we need to work together as a council and not go backwards. Okay? Each and every one of you, I consider a friend, a colleague. I respect each and every one of you. And right now, I'm in a place where I'm feeling like something, something happened today, and I don't know why, but I'm feeling a certain way, and I'm the type of person, when I feel something, I say something. And I just want to make sure that regardless of what happened, moving forward, or moving to forward together on this dies in the right way. That, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
I love council conversations. I think that's, this is, this is where we really get to, you know, talk and converse, and you're talking about OPMA, and this is when we can do it.
It's our chance, yeah. So I also, yeah, I think, you know, we introduced that council conversations and the committee reports fairly recently, and I, I agree, I think they're, we could probably do a better job reporting. One of the things that we didn't cover in the committees that I think we probably will end up talking about later is if we want to continue the liaisons to boards and commissions. I personally don't think that's the best use of our time, and I'd rather that we get reports, or have the boards come before us, you know, once a year, twice a year, so that everyone on council knows where all the boards and commissions are, because we're, we're not regularly giving each other updates, and it's just another meeting. I think there are better uses of our time. I mean, we're all busy. We just went through the committee reports. So that's something that I, I would like to talk about, and maybe, even when we talk about making appointments to boards and commissions, I think we could do a better job. And then we're all better informed if we get a written, maybe the chairs quarterly write us a written report, and we kind of all know where they're at. But I, I also value the conversations, and I just wanted to go back to the Sound Transit. I'd, I'd love to know if, if I was the only one who didn't, didn't know about Popkinie not happening.
Yeah, that was the last I had heard of it, was, you know, was the original plan was Popkinie, so that it had shifted off, or that the school district and Sound Transit were having, you know, loggerheads on coming to an agreement with it, was new to me. And so, yeah, after I heard that from you, the city manager and I had discussions, and so that prompted that. So I was happy for that tickler on to ask the right questions. So, so, yeah, I think it's important for us to continue with these, these Sound Transit boards, or, you know, the 405 and the 522 BRT boards, so that we're connected, and that we can use our regional collection, or connections as a council, just, and with our elected weight, you know, being able to do what we can for the city staff through our connections, you know, if they have a request for us, or, you know, keeping us informed, just going the two-way street here, because we have different strengths than the city staff. So, I mean, they're working at it every day, but we're also connecting with different people. So it's, I think it's good to use all of our tools that we have, so. So it's, I think it's good to use all of our tools that we have, so.
I have a question. Because we frequently meet with the North Shore School District, and we're not the only kid on their block, only city that they have to communicate and work with. But I'm wondering, we meet with them once a year, and a lot can happen in a year, and we, you know, that we need to get caught up on. I'm wondering if it might be prudent for council to go to a city, go, you know, once a month to a school district board meeting, just to know what's going on with them? I mean, how do we, how can we work at being better connected with what's going on with the school board? Is it just going to a meeting, or is it meeting with them?
It's building relationships with them.
Right.
Like you meet the school board members and build a relationship. So you can go to a meeting, or you can sit down and have coffee with them, similar to what we do with other electeds in other cities.
I would love to do something like that.
Well, sure. Yeah. I mean, we're all, I mean, I do it on occasion. I'll meet with David and others. So, yeah, reach out to them, go have coffee with them, talk to them about what they're working on and what they're doing. That's how I become part of the diversity committee, was because I reached out and wanted to be part of it. So absolutely. And that's how, you know, I have students that go to the North Shore School District, so it's important to make sure I understand. I learn a lot, you know? It's becoming an elected official, and, you know, fighting a cause to save the golf course, and then becoming an elected official, I learned a ton. I mean, now we have to maintain the golf course, and it, running one Bothell, I didn't understand that. I didn't understand the cost of maintaining the golf course. But now, being elected, I understand that. And now it's my responsibility to educate the community, to understand that. So I've learned from the people that I work with, and that is the school board as well. We may not have the best relationship, or we may not work with them every single day, but I encourage you, reach out to them, talk to them, get to know them. They're fabulous people.
Yeah. No, I agree with that. I mean, one of them lives on my hill, just, you know, practically stone's throw. I guess, you know, you worry about OPMA. Do we have too many council members? Do we need to make an official meeting? How can we be connected with the business that they're doing in a committed way without placing undue burden on the system?
So are you talking about, like, a school board liaison, or some, something like that?
Something like that.
Yeah. Because I do, I regularly talk to school board members, too, but it's not formal, and it's not, you know, I'm not deputized by the city. It's just, like, we talk, and I kind of hear what they're, what's going on with them. But, yeah, it's not formalized.
And then that starts to feel a little bit like hearsay.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? It doesn't feel, it feels like, you know, you're, it most likely isn't, but then it kind of feels like it's hearsay when it's not under the auspices of something that's officially going on, and the public can participate in on.
Yeah. I mean, you can, I mean, I became part of the bullying and harassment board, or whatever they had. But it's, you know, I mean, they have, they often have these kind of ad hoc, short-term ways that you can get involved. Like, the bullying and harassment really was only kind of like a year, year and a half, and then it ended. But, I mean, it's a way to be connected a little bit more formally.
Right. So but, so how do we, as a city, though, stay connected with big things that impact us, like Popkinie field? I don't know. I don't know how, I don't know how you do that without placing an undue burden on the city that's trying to already do other business. But still, where we have a finger on the pulse of things that's going on with them that impact the city.
Yeah, there's a lot going on.
I don't have an answer for that.
So if I may, I did serve on the board with North Shore School District to do their five-year goal setting. And that was a very exciting opportunity to work with them and actually go through that process of their goal setting. So there are issues, community people needed to serve on committees such as that, and many, like you said, the bullying and harassment committee. I'm kind of working, I was really excited to be able to be on the diversity committee for North Shore School District and Equity, Diversity and Equity, because I kind of have a goal. And I think this is a good time to talk about what your goals are, but my goal is to kind of work with young people who are working toward seeds of passion. So that kind of comes from the Dalai Lama, but I want to say that because some four students went to India and met with the Dalai Lama, and I was a part of a group that met with Dalai Lama when they did Seeds of Compassion in Seattle, the conference they made. So I think when you get a chance to serve on something where you have some real goals, it's pretty exciting. But I would like to hear anybody else's goals, because I think it's important that we talk about what our goals are for our community or for ourselves.
I agree. Well, maybe, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe if, it's great to have those enrichments. I'm just thinking about things that directly, and I do, you know, please stay doing that. I'm not trying to say that marginalize that in any way, shape, or form. But maybe when we do, I'm assuming that we're going to have a meeting at some point where we just have a little roundtable with the school board, maybe that's the point to say, how can we connect with you and communicate with you? And, you know, what works for us to know when you're making decisions that they impact the city of Bothell? How can we advocate for you? And how do we know, you know, how can you tell us when there's things going on with you that are going to impact us? Maybe that's the time to have that conversation with, when we meet with the school board.
Yeah, that's a great conversation to have with them. I think you could also do that across the three cities of North Shore, right? Kenmore, Woodinville, collectively meeting. But again, that takes time and resources and things like that to make happen, and we've got, we're going into a very big budget year right now, so we've got a long plate. So I wanted to bring up some of the, Rosemary, you brought up the youth council. And something interesting is, we have boards and commissions. And there may be some structure that we have to look at this upcoming year on, you know, maybe different boards. But it might be an opportunity for us to get, you know, some youth part of maybe those boards or something, so they feel like they're involved. So, you know, more to come on that. You know, I think, Rosemary, you're going to bring that forward. But I think those kinds of things coming from us are important to hear during council conversations. And how they go to the city, we collectively, as a council, need to make those decisions. But I think we become better council members, not only locally here at home in our community, but regionally, by having these open dialogues and having, because we all take in, we have a different lens, every single one of us, from the community on what we hear, what the wants and needs are of our community. So you're associating with different people in the community than I am. I'm associating with the NPRSA for seniors, but I'm also associating with a lot of youth within our community who want sports fields and things like that. So my lens looks a little different than your lens might be, being close to the UW, or maybe the deputy mayor being all-around transportation and being at the state level or Liam. We all look at it from a different lens, but that's what makes us great, right? That's what, that's what gives this council the opportunity to be the greatest council around. And I wholeheartedly believe that, because I think we're in a very special place right now. But I want to just make sure that every single one of us feel free to talk about what's important to us during these council conversations, and understand that just because we bring it up here doesn't mean we want the whole entire council to do something with it. We just want to make sure that everybody's learning and hearing from us on our different take on things.
I agree. I think networking is such a big part of what we do. It's not, but it's not formal, right? I mean, a lot of what we do, working regionally, is just building relationships with other councils, and King County, and Snowmish County, and there's no roadmap for that. It just kind of happens as you, as you get involved, and you start to have different interests, so. And, I mean, Councilmember McNeil, you've done an amazing job representing Bothell, and I'm excited to see where you go this year.
Looks like we're winding down. So we need a motion to adjourn?
I would so move to adjourn.
All right. So we have a motion from Councilmember McAuliffe, a second by Councilmember Doer.
Sorry, it'll be a voice vote tonight, because the system's not set up with the new.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion passes. We're all adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
There you go, ma'am.